Good evening. Now, let me welcome each one of you to the second meeting, the regular Town Council Meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for April 22nd. At this time, I want to invite Brother Don Ivy, Pastor of Long Creek Baptist Church, to come and lead us in the invocation.
Real short, I'd like to say two things. Thank you for having me here. And secondly, I'm sorry I didn't make it two weeks ago, but I had an emergency surgery with my son, so thank you very much for having me here. Everybody, would you please bow your heads? Lord, let us say thank you on behalf of all that are gathered here together. Thank you for the many blessings. Thank you for the life itself and for our health. Thank you for the ability to be involved in a useful work and for the honor in bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us. You have said that the citizens ought to obey the government since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor and for the various levels of city officials and for the ones that are assembled here that are our council. Give them wisdom, government, and ability to go and lead in our direction, a sense of welfare and true needs for our town, a sense of confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in all their lives. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance in what would please you and what would benefit those that live and work in the Town of Sunnyvale. We ask that in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Brother. Please join me in standing for the... I ask you pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Now, time is 7:02. Let me call to order the regular Town Council Meeting of the Town of Sunnyvale for April We got Mayor Protim Wade and Councilmember Finch absent today, but we have Councilmember Egan, Clark, and Allen present, so we have coral. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation. That's a proclamation by Mayor George recognizing May 6 to 10, 2019, as National Economic Development Week in the Town of Sunnyvale. We make the proclamation. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, and whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. And whereas the economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base, and whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurship to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy, and whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions, and whereas economic developers work in the Town of Sunnyvale within the state of Texas, and now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale do hereby recognize May 6 through 10, 2019, as National Economic Development Week in the Town of Sunnyvale, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration that supports expanding career opportunities and improving quality of life. Be it further resolved that Town Council is authorized and directed to transmit an appropriate copy of this resolution to the Sunnyvale 4A Development Corporation and Sunnyvale 4B Development Corporation and the International Economic Development Council. In testimony thereof, the mayor of the Town of Sunnyvale has hereunto subscribed his name and have caused the official seal of the Town of Sunnyvale to be hereunto affixed on this 22nd day of April 2019. Tracy, if I can have you come up and see this.
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is the public forum. Before I open up the public forum, if you are here to participate in tonight's discussion by addressing the council in the public forum or any other time, including applicants, can you please take a moment to stop by the table in the lobby and fill out the log-in sheet in the purple folder so that we have record for the official minutes? With that, I'm going to open up the public forum. Let me invite Town Manager Ms. Capri for an introduction and welcome.
Thank you, sir. As you know, Johnny Meeks is retiring this week. He is very much a humble person and does not want to be recognized, so I'm not recognizing Johnny's great years of service to date. But what I do want to do is introduce to you the person that has been hired to replace Johnny. Some pretty big shoes to fill, but Brian Creed, and he's here, he wants to stand up and wave. So Brian has been with the city for two years, and he's been serving as the Assistant Director. So that's really wonderful experience and knowledge for him to have to bring to the team, that he already knows, you know, a lot of things that are going on in the town, and he knows the team really well. And I can tell you that Leslie and I went and met with the team to make this announcement last week and had breakfast with them, and they were very, very happy about our selection. But Brian also, in addition to the time before he got here, he has decades of experience in water treatment, wastewater treatment, and was with the City of Commerce and all the way up to including the Director of Public Utilities. So he brings some wonderful experience, and we all know him and work really well with him. So if you could welcome Brian, I'd appreciate it.
Brian, welcome aboard. Again, one more time, as the Director, we expect and look forward to seeing great things from you and through you. Thank you very much. Susan, thanks for the introduction.
I'm Mayor...
Okay, now I...
Mayor, go lines. I'm an alumni.
Okay, now I'm going to open up the public forum. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the council, please come forward at this time.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a comment in the public forum. I just want to, kind of as a reminder to everyone, that today started the first day of early voting. That will last through May 6, I believe it is. And I think it's very important, there is one issue on the ballot, apart from all the issues on the... On the ballot are important, but I think it's very important that people also pay very close attention to the adopting of the new charter, Home Rule Charter rules that were put into place or that were developed and hopefully will to be approved. As a member of the Home Rule Charter Commission, there were a lot of hours that went into the development of the new rules and concepts that were put together. I think that all of these things were debated, rebated, and debated again, and we ended up with the, I believe there's nine different actions. I don't remember exactly the number, but it's very important, each of the actions or each of the charter changes have to be voted on individually. It is not one single vote that covers all the changes. And we, as the commission, apologize for, and in fact, we're very wary of putting too many things in there, but most of the things that we put in there were, the committee felt very important, that got implemented into this charter. And quite frankly, paralleling along with that, since we finalized this, we've identified some additional things that I've been working with the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager on to make sure we've got a file that we're building to take care of other issues that we're beginning to realize, not necessarily as a result of the work that we did, but just areas we didn't think to cover. So anyway, I just want to make that a point for those in the audience and for those at home who may be listening, that please come to Town Hall, please vote. It's important in order that we know where you want us to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Anyone else? Okay, no one else is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public forum at this time. Council, we have four items on the consent agenda. Number one, Department monthly reports, March 2019. Number two, consider approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the Town Council for April 8, 2019. Number three, act upon the first reading of Ordinance 19-12, an ordinance of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, adopting the Town's Code of Ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials, repealing all prior ordinances or resolutions related to the adoption of the Town's Code of Ethics, and conduct for elected and appointed officials and providing an effective date. Number four, act upon the second reading of Ordinance 19-10, an ordinance amending Ordinance 18-16, which made appropriation for the support of the Town of Sunnyvale for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, and amended the annual budget of the Town of Sunnyvale for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Council, I'm going to remove item number four, that's the mid-year budget, from the consent agenda. So we have three more items remaining, item number one, two, and three. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda item 1, 2, and 3?
Motion to approve items 1, 2, and 3.
And second, 1, 2, and 3.
Motion made by Mr. Clark and second by Mr. Allen to approve consent agenda items 1, 2, and 3. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed 4-0. Mayor Protim Wade and Councilmember Finch are absent. Okay, I want to say one more time, thanks to Charles Anderson and the Ethics Committee for the great work you've done and many, many hours you spent. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's talk the item number four, that is the mid-year budget. Let me just kind of pull up the items here, one second. Council, meanwhile, I'm looking for it. Do you have any questions or discussion on mid-year budget? Can I ask Town Manager to explain the Collins Road, the impact, or back for one more time? That way people understand the... And the council understands the increase in cost and options we have here.
Right. So this is our mid-year budget, and it's an opportunity to just reconcile what has been spent and also to acknowledge increases in revenue and bring those into the budget. In the last meeting, Liz gave a very thorough PowerPoint presentation and also all of the backup materials, but so this... And we make changes to the budget by ordinance, and our charter requires two readings of an ordinance in order to make it effective. And so what we're doing is we're bringing it back for the second reading of that ordinance, but we are allowing for public comment and for council questions. So this is really a formality, but it also is an opportunity for the public to engage in the process. And if you have any questions at all, Liz has all of her materials and has the PowerPoint available and at the ready if it's needed.
Ms. Hopkin, can you go over the Collins Road project one more time, just that chart?
Okay.
Because that's a big increase in the cost. I want to be very clear to everybody that increase in cost.
Okay, we're going to see if we can pull that slide up. And in the meantime, if you are looking at the slide presentation, it's going to be about five pages in, it's going to say Collins Road Phase 1. And again, that's from Highway US 80 through the trip road intersection. Has everybody found that?
Yes.
Behind. The next slide is the remaining cost and the funding of the project. I think Rachel's going to find this slide for us. And basically, again, none of this has changed since the...
119.
Since the previous meeting. But the costs are laid out there for you, the construction costs of the $8,494, and that's per a bid document that we received. We added a couple of things while our engineer felt like it was necessary to make this project, make sure everything is done correctly, and that was the materials testing and the utility relocate. So we have a remaining cost of $8,583. And then your funding sources, again, have not changed since the last presentation. You have your 2017 certificates of obligation. You have $3,105,781, and that's after the right-of-way had been purchased. Dallas County's current committed contribution of $3,480. You have road impact in Stony Creek, which can be used for this project, and a total of $1,625 as of 3-1. So that gives you a total funding source of $8,210,943. So that leaves an unfunded portion of $372,807. There it is, finally. Ta-da. Thank you, Rachel. That's it, thank you. And then the next slide shows where that gap will come from, and that would be an increased contribution from Dallas County, which has been requested, and general fund reserves are approximately 222 days of reserves.
Council, any questions on that particular item?
Not that we can do anything about it, but just something that was in the back of my mind as I was looking at this. This amounts to about a 15% increase over what the original OPC was. Just as a point of reference, did that 15% exceed what you would have expected?
Well, I think that we were not shocked when it came up because of the time that's elapsed from the time the project started until it ended. I also think that, just in retrospect, I think the right-of-way acquisition was probably more costly than was probably originally anticipated. And not only that, but things have been very busy in the construction industry, and as a matter of fact, when we put this out to bid, all the people who were at the pre-bid meeting came to us and asked us to move the due date because there were so many projects up for bid, they didn't even have time to prepare their bids for us. So that means it's very competitive, and you're going to have to pay premium. And if, when we get to that item, you'll notice that there's about a million-dollar difference between low bid and second-lowest bid. So, I mean, it's very competitive right now, and I think that impacted the costs as well. But right now, we are waiting to hear back from Dallas County on if they're going to be able to participate at an additional amount. So when we come to that item tonight, we're going to ask that we not take action on it just so that we can get resolution to that question before we award the bid.
So if you were to take out the right-of-way acquisitions, because we did know, I mean, those were our dollars that we knew about, would you have expected the increase in costs to track with the amount of time, or would it be a little bit less, or would it be still more?
Well, Lyle and I looked at some things because we're, you know, facing this with some other projects that have not come online, and there is actually an index. It is, it is, I cannot remember the name of it, but I can get that information for you, but it's basically what is the index for the passage of time on a construction project? And nationally, it's about 8% a year. So if you take the time that has passed on this project and you take that 8%, and of course, that depends on, you know, what city you're in and the cost of concrete and the nature of the project. Lots of factors go into that, but that 8% seems to be something that you could kind of foot back to this project, actually, in my opinion.
And thank you, Liz. That's a good explanation. I just, I don't expect you to dig that information out for us because you've proven already that you've done due diligence to make sure that something's not out of whack here, is what it all really boils down to. We knew the right-of-way acquisition was going to be out of whack whenever we were going through that negotiation.
Well, the other thing that we have done is Lyle went through the bid tabulation, the engineers went through the bid tabulation, you know, the ones that who did the design, and Dallas County also went through the bid tabulation. So we've had three different groups look at this to make sure that we're comfortable with what the bids came in at. So I think it's probably a really good bid that we got.
Okay, thank you. Council, additional questions for staff? If not, I'm going to open up this for a public hearing, since this is the second reading of the ordinance. I want to give members of the audience an opportunity to ask questions about this mid-year No one else is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, are there additional discussions or questions on this topic? If not, let me see, I can get the ordinance here, second for not me again. If not, can I have a motion with respect to Ordinance 19-10?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve Ordinance 19-10. I present it.
Second.
Second by Clark. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed. Ordinance 19-10 is passed, is approved, motion passed 4-0. Mayor Protim Wade and Councilmember Finch are absent.
And thanks to staff, Phyllis and Rachel, Gretchen, all of you guys, good job. I mean, this has been long and arduous. It's time to start seeing some dirt turning, but thanks for the effort.
But thanks for the efforts. It's, I think, going to put a nice rose in the middle of our town that's, I think, sorely needed. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, that's the hold a public hearing, discuss and consider an act upon the second reading of the Sunnyvale Center Truck Service and Park Plant Development Ordinance 19-11, PD-04, a request by David Jackson, the Jackson Company, to change the town zoning map from industrial to industrial plant development. Sunnyvale Center Truck Service and Park, add to or about 326 to 330, clear route. Jackson?
Mayor, counsel. As you noted, this is the second reading of this proposed zone change. This is for a proposed development that would allow for the servicing and truck storage, PD specifically for overnight storage. And on that note, at the first reading, a town council requested that additional language be added to prohibit the idling of vehicles and overnight stays within the development. So that has been added to the PD, that was highlighted in your packet. No other changes are noted to the PD language. Staff recommends approval for town council's request.
Counsel, are there any questions on it? Mr. Stevens, did you have a question about something?
Well, I had brought up, and had thought about, and just mentioned to you briefly, and maybe Mr. Jackson can answer toward this. One of the concerns I happened to think about after we had that last meeting was the potential for storage of hazardous materials on the site, either highly volatile materials, whether the tanker's empty or it's full, or any other such something that, is that, is that going to be a possibility within this development that we need to be sorely concerned about? Because, I mean, I'm worried about it from a fire prevention perspective and side-by-side trucks, if they do happen to be side-by-side, but then also from groundwater contamination right next to the water, the water treatment plant. And I'm, I'm kind of hoping, and I know it's at a late period to be discussing it, we should have probably discussed it at the last time around, but it just hit me the other day. So your thoughts on that?
Y'all have done such a great job grappling with all the issues. You know, this is, this park will be developed really by Randy Timms, Western Flyers, who is in the park right now. His, like I mentioned, his primary use is to meet the needs of Marazzi Tile Storing Trailers. But it's a big tract of land, and, you know, so we were looking at being able to rent to truckers. So that, that is an interesting question, you know, would we allow, I guess you'd say, tankers carrying hazardous materials? You know, if I were developing it, I'd say, you know, it's not worth my risk, you know, to sign a lease with a guy who's going to put trucks out there that are tankering hazardous I'm not sure what kind of mechanism you could put in place. That's not the intention. Like I say, most of these, besides all the Marazzi trailer type storage, most of these truckers are just over-the-road truckers. But what if you came along with somebody who had, you know, five
I'm thinking of a Sherwin-Williams 18-wheeler, not necessarily a tanker, but a box truck full of paint.
Sure, sure. And I mean, you know, January Environmental is on Aston Street backing up to this property on the north side, and you occasionally see a tank truck in his parking lot. Most of the time, the building looks vacant. You know, I, that's not the intention. I don't know what we would perhaps need to do to deal with that issue. Like I say, if I were owning it and managing it, it's just not worth the risk. Let him find another place to park. But, you know, and Randy Timms, it may be a while before he gets to that stage. My understanding is, you know, we filed the plat without the site plan because we're just wanting to transact the land over from Frank Fine into Randy Timms. He'll do the site plan later, but I don't think he's planning on building it all out right away. I said, but if you build anything out, you're going to have to build out the concrete driveways, you'll have to put the fire loop in, you'll have to fence it and put the fatigues, and if you want to wait till later to do the service center and build out the rest of the fire lines, you'll probably do that, but, you know, you're going to have to work with the city on that. I think his big giant mission is just to meet Marazzi tile's needs. So I don't know. What would be your suggestion?
Well, and I think at this stage of the game, this probably needs to move forward. Fire code tends to give some amount of control of that. Fire chief can
Sure, there will be two, two more, if you remember the driveways that were vertical, there were going to be two more fire hydrants put up there. There's some at the front of the site. So it'll be fire-covered, so to speak.
I think, I think my position is, and the town attorney may have some other comment toward this because it's, it's kind of gray when you do this, is that is, please impress the owner that we would hope their intention is not to allow vehicles, whether it's a tanker truck or a box truck. And again, the Sherwin-Williams one is a good example of that.
You're right.
Where they could be carrying volatiles inside the box truck, and, you know, they got to carry the one gallon jugs somehow or another. They don't take a tanker and fill up a whole bunch of one gallon jugs at the Sherwin-Williams store.
Yeah.
So just to impress upon the owner, and David, is that something, and Rashad, you could probably kick in here too, with regard to the coverage that the fire chief would have, because they're always allowed onsite anyway regardless.
Right. You still have the fire code, and knowing that this, knowing the process that Mr. Timms is going to go, you still have a couple of bites at this where the fire department will be reviewing this prior to construction again. We have the plat, we have the site plan, then you have the CO, the building permit. So there'll be opportunities for him to chime in if we understand that there's going to be storage of volatile materials there.
Sure. But
You don't give any debate that to the PD?
I don't, I wouldn't think, yeah, I would, I would find it hard for the town to regulate that. We wouldn't know what was necessarily in the truck. Not a management company, they could get into that type of detail, but for us, you talk about inside the facility, inside the facility, the building, yes, but the coming and going of the trucks, that'd be hard for staff to actually regulate.
Also, you're better off enforcing other ordinances. If it's a zoning violation, you have a much longer process to actually get it addressed. If it's a hazard, you want to go out there and deal with it as a hazard, not a zoning violation, which it would be under the PD. Yeah, and the key thing is just, I wanted to bring it up because if we don't discuss it
Good point, Mr.
We end up with something, but at least we've discussed it, and, and we can move forward with where that needs to go.
Ms. Guthrie, any comments, additional comments?
Well, just that we, Rashad and I had discussed this prior to the meeting, and both of us felt that in part of the development process and the, having the fire chief be able to have, say in that, that this is probably not the step in which to do it, that there's later steps that is more appropriate.
Okay, if you can keep that in your notes on. Mr. Stevens, did that answer your question?
Sure does.
Okay, since the applicant is here, counsel, do you have any other questions for the applicant at this time?
Mayor, to that conversation, I believe EPA is going to cover all the hazard environmental issues federally and statewide as well, so
Yeah, those truckers are pretty regulated, so.
Mr. Clark?
Okay, so I think, so this is more for Rashad, but I believe that we've added language in the PD for no overnight stays. Is that correct? What about, I think a lot of times truckers sleep during the day and then drive at night. So could we make sure the language is broad enough so it's no, people don't just sleep during the day too, because it's like a loophole? So maybe make it a little broader, so it's, you know, they shouldn't be sleeping there, staying there. I think, I think that's what we were trying to capture with, you know, they don't want to keep their, you know, rigs running and whatnot, but, so let's just think about that, just capturing the whole, like, no sleeping there during the day or night.
How do you think we could, I mean, the idling itself would prevent that.
Yeah, I expanded the idling language y'all asked for. Instead of no idling overnight, I also included no extended idling.
Okay, so I think that captures, I just want to make sure, on the record, we're saying, we're not just talking about nights, sleeping at night, we're talking about like sleeping there during the day, during the nights, wherever, whatever time it is. And I, you know, I think that was the, where we were trying to go to. So I didn't want to make it too narrow.
No, that's the way we were interpreting that regulation.
Okay, great. Additional questions for the applicant? Thanks, David. So this is a public hearing, agenda items, we're going to open up the forum, if, the area, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about this topic, please come forward. No one is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, are there additional questions or discussions on this topic? Again, this is the second reading, so can I have a motion with respect to ordinance 19-11, PD 04, a request by David Jackson, the Jackson Company, to change the town zoning map from industrial to industrial plant development, Sunnyvale Center Truck Service and Park, add to or about 326, 330, clear route.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve the ordinance, as presented. Second.
Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Allen. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed 4-0. Proton Mayor Wade and Councilmember Finch are absent. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Counsel, the next one is the item number six. As Ms. Guthrie explained earlier, this item is going to be pulled, waiting for further discretion and for the process to mature. Hopefully, we'll be, the process will be matured and we'll bring it back in June for council approval. I just want to make sure everybody understands that this council, personally, I'm very committed to seeing the Collins Road completed soon, as early as possible, but we thought this is the right things to do at this time to pull this agenda, okay? I think we are coming to the last item on the agenda, that is to mayor and council, agenda item. Counsel, are there any additional items you want to bring or see coming to a future council?
Mayor, I just have one item, and I've already brought that to the town manager's attention earlier, and that has to go with construction on holidays. There were people framing on Easter Sunday, and I think that's outside of the spirit of our ordinance. So whatever we need to do to keep cracking down on that, I appreciate that.
Construction?
Yeah, it's construction. Specifically framing, it wasn't quite construction, it was framing.
Anything else? Okay. If not, now, it's a short meeting. Now, time is 7:37. We are going to adjourn the regular town council meeting of town of Sunnyvale for April 22nd. Thank you and good night.